Good. Call is meeting order. Roll call, please.
Brian Card.
Here.
Michael Huco.
Here.
John Serenopoulos.
Here.
Norman Ferrin.
Present.
Lorraine Lagard.
Here.
And Keith Thurlo.
Present.
Okay, seating will alternate. Norm will be acting for both purposes. Okay, any addendums? Do you want to do the citizens' comments and then if we need to do both, I'll read the other.
Okay. Citizen comments and items not subject to public hearing. Individual presentations not to exceed three minutes, limit to an aggregate of 21 minutes unless otherwise indicated by majority vote of the commission. Public comments can be emailed to publiccomment@killinglyct.gov or mailed to the town of Killingly, 172 Main Street, Killingly, Connecticut, 06239. All public comments must be received prior to 2:00 p.m. on the day of the public meet -- on the day of the meeting, excuse me. Public comment received will be posted on the town's website, www.killinglyct.gov. This is a hybrid meeting. Citizens can participate in the citizens' comment by WebEx, joined by phone, 1-415-655-0001. Access code is six, excuse me, 2632-376-7505. I did check with the town manager staff. There was no public comments received by email. We haven't received any in our office.
Anybody here want comments, public comments? Okay. Public hearings, review discussion happening. Public hearing comments can be emailed to publiccomment@killinglyct.gov or mailed to the town of Killingly, 172 Main Street, Killingly, Connecticut, 06239. All public comments must be received prior to 2:00 p.m. the day of the meeting. Public hearing comments received will be posted on town's website, killinglyct.gov. To participate in the public hearings, the public may join the meeting via telephone while viewing the meeting on Facebook Live. To join by phone, please dial 1-415-655-0001 and use the access code 2632-376-7505. Okay, special permit application number 251346, 543 Warreagan Road, LLC, 543 Warreagan Road, GIS map 262, Lot 20, Harford, 2 acres. General Commercial, construct two freestanding storage unit buildings with a lot line adjustment 543, 553, and 559 Warreagan Road. 553 and 559 are vacant and zone general commercial, contained from March 17. Mr. DeLuca, how are you?
Good. For the record, Bob DeLuca, I'm with CLA Engineers representing 543 Warreagan Road, LLC. Based on last meeting, there were several comments. I'd like to just go through them one at a time. Also, Mr. Cott had some questions regarding the drainage, which I was going to go through, the existing and proposed drainage on the site. So I sent a response letter about a week ago back to the town, hitting up each one of these comments. I don't know if you -- does everyone have that letter to Anne-Marie? So they're in the order of the way they were listed in your minutes. The first comment had to do with lights to be DocSky compliant. We did specify a DocSky compliant light. The one we had originally was not. This shows the light casting about 19 feet from the face of the building. I think the previous one was closer to 30 or 40 feet. There was a question about -- the second comment had to do with running an analysis for the truck radius. If you don't mind, Jonathan, that was sketch number four, which is right at the end of this sheet. So we did speak to Anne-Marie, who spoke to the fire marshal and asked us to accommodate a 35-foot long emergency vehicle. Yeah, this is the one. So it actually ended up, the vehicle we chose was actually 36 feet. We did -- it does maneuver around the parking area. We ended up having to enlarge the gate to 25 feet to get back out, to make that last The next comment, concern about the 50-foot strip. I think this had to do with the drainage from the head wall. If you can go to the last sheet, Jonathan. This is a DOT sheet. I talked to the drainage engineer at DOT and they gave me the -- as built of when that line was plugged, which was -- it was plugged in 1972, so 53 years ago it was plugged. It was replaced with -- it's a 15-inch outfall, which was plugged, and then they put a new 30-inch drainage system along Route 12. The state has no plans to use that outfall. However, it is their policy to retain it because we originally approached them about backfilling and planting grass there. But they do not want to give that up. If you can go to sketch three, Jonathan, and I think the questions stem from if flow ever, yes, if flow ever, if that outfall is used for some reason in the future, where will the flow go? And I think you were on it. It was the one with the --
Yeah, I was trying to get to get bigger.
Yeah. Yeah, so the green line represents where the existing flow is going prior to this building. The blue line represents after this building is installed. So it converges at the same location along that 50-foot strip.
Can I just ask a question while you're on that?
Yep.
So the 18-inch is plugged, right?
Yeah, correct.
So where's the 30-inch you referenced?
It's actually a 15-inch. The 30-inch runs parallel with 12. It can -- they basically plug this outfall and -- look at the last sheet again. That's the DOT map.
His DOT map doesn't show the 30-inch either, so it's --
It's kind of hard to read probably, but there's -- it's across the street. It's that thick, there's a thick line. There's references to a 30-inch that runs south down Route 12. It eventually dumps in a brook several hundred feet south of there. Yeah. Can't see it on that little plan.
No, you can't.
No, it's on the -- I mean, it obviously isn't going to show it.
So this is the 30-inch?
No, this is the straight one. It's 30-inch RCP. So this is what's plugged. So then they put this new system in and run this way and then dump something down.
So it's like this double line right here?
Correct. That double line is -- see, probably can't see it on here. So all there is to reference is --
Yeah, and that's, that goes to the reason why it's unlikely they'll ever use this because, you know, the upside, the system, it has a much bigger outfall, so that this was only a small 15-inch outfall. So they'd have to break apart their existing system that's been in place for 50 years now.
Yep. So just two comments, and one would be, we should show that 30-inch pipe on the front?
Okay.
If it's existing, and you might want to just make a comment. It's listed as 18-inch on your drawing.
The cross pipe is?
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's probably just a matter of the surveyors trying to get down in that hole and measure it and --
You just might want to, you know, correct out the 15-inch and put it plugged in it.
Yep.
Yeah, that's all.
I think we do reference it as plugged, but we don't show the 15 and 30-inch across the street.
Yeah. And just reference that drainage, because again, like I said before, it looks like we're diverting drainage into the easement, the 50-foot easement, but that's not the case because what you're telling us is that it's existing, all that drainage. There's nothing coming across the road number one.
Correct.
And anything along the front is traveling to the north.
Yeah, and that's why we thought they'd let us fill it and plant grass, but that was not going to happen, so. And I understand their position. They don't want to be the one to say that, who did that? Who let? The next comment was about sediment and runoff. We do have a stormwater management plan that addresses this somewhat. We added, in item five of that plan, we added a requirement that, in addition to annual cleaning, that if it's six inch, if the depth is six inches or more, to be cleaned. I think that was one of the comments during last meeting. Next item had to do with motion detecting, detector lights. As I mentioned the last meeting, my client would prefer to use photocell lights in light of using the DocSky compliant lights that are casting much less from the building. Also, he added a few more trees along Route 12. He'd like to maintain using the photocell lights. He's had -- the motion detective lights are just more temperamental to deal with. The next item was about the snow shelf, which we did have a snow shelf. Just confirming that we do, we do, we are showing 15 feet to the fence for all the grassed areas on the outside. The only area I would say is not, doesn't have a snow shelf is the dividing line between the existing pavement, which will just have to be cleaned completely similar to up against the building. But all the other sides do have a snow shelf. Emergency overflow, sediment buildup, and volume goes up. So we did, in addition, if you can flip to, I think this is the sheet before this, Jonathan. Yep, yep. So we, a couple of things we did with the drainage. We added a swale on the north side of the holding pond, sediment pond, and that swale will direct existing water from a larger portion of the existing pavement to the pond. And so we resized the pond to account for that additional stormwater, and in addition, we added a foot to the depth, which was requested to have another foot of storage. I think that's three. That's sheet three. The next item, pond clean annually, we addressed that in the above item. About, this had to do with, if there was a certain height, it should be cleaned, we used six inches, the sediment to be removed. Next item was about handicap parking. We show these, there are, I didn't, I didn't remember if there was parking there, and a survey didn't show it, but there are four striped handicap parking spaces in the front and are, right off that striped area, right, can you see them, Jonathan? Yeah, right there. Last item was about the DOT letter, which we did attach. Last item was just discussing what's going on with the drainage on site. Jonathan, there is a --
Sketch one.
Sketch one, yeah. There it is. It's up. So, let me get mine. I can't read those numbers. So existing, the building itself, the existing storage building, the old Bennys building, has roof leaders in the rear, and it, that's called existing watershed area three. It goes to the rear of the building. The area is depressed and appears to infiltrate, doesn't appear like there's an outlet. It's a gravelly area. So right now, that area actually stays on site. Area four is a very small paved area, just to the north of the existing building. That sheet flows to Lucine, gets in catch basins. Area two is a portion of the paved parking lot. That gets into a catch basin system that goes to Lucine also. Area 1B includes the remainder of the existing paved surface and the existing woods on the adjacent parcel that we're proposing to the two buildings. That sheet flows into the woods and either infiltrates or goes off-site. Area 1A is the area just west of the abandoned outfall, and that just sheet flows off-site to the west and south. Yeah, well, can you flip to the next one? There it is. Yep. I know, it moves, now the one right before it. There it is. Yep. So area two, three, and four remain the same. We haven't changed those. Area 1B, we're grabbing a good portion of the existing pavement, about 0.67 acres, and directing it to the pond now. And area 1A has more or less, the shape has changed a little, but more or less stayed the same size and about the same amount of water. Our drainage calculus will show that all the, the drainage has either remained the same or has been decreased, leaving the site. In addition, like I said, we're taking about half the existing pavement and we're running it through the stormwater, water quality basin. That was it for the comments. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Staff?
Yes.
None. Well, that's as quick as I see things go.
Go ahead, sir.
Just a general question, like not specific to this case, but say, you know, the site plan's approved and everything, and you find that there's some flooding going on in some area. Does that ever happen, and how is that addressed?
Let's not answer that because that plan is their responsibility.
If it's approved and it's working the way the site plan has approved it, there's not much we can say. I know that they've been dealing with the land, the person that purchasing the property from is also the person who owns the property to the bottom of that, of that. So I know they've been in discussion with them. Sometimes it would come to a situation where it would be more of a civil matter than a town matter. If it's going how they say it's supposed to be going in the site plan, they do everything in accordance to the site plan. But say we have a, and I'm going to be very, exaggerate very much, like a 500-year storm, in which case nothing ever goes the right way, and there's flooding, and then the person says, that owns it, says, I have a flooding situation. If it's designed the way it's supposed to be designed, and with, you know, 500-year storm is a unusual storm, then if there was any damage, it'd be a civil matter between the two landowners.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So the other question for me would be, if there's six inches in there, so there's somebody designated to monitor the six inches of --
Yeah, there, I mean, based on our stormwater quality, I mean, our stormwater management, someone's supposed to check this every three months. I don't know how that gets policed, but that's, that's the plan.
That would be up to the landowner to hire somebody, and what we would suggest is that the landowner give us the name and number of the person that they hired to do that sort of scheduling.
Okay.
You can install, sorry, you can install a sediment indicator in the pond.
Yeah, it might just be a visual thing. I mean, I can tell.
Yeah, you can install basically a sediment indicator and says when you don't see this line, or if you don't see something, and then you're going to clean out the pond.
Okay. Any other questions? John?
No.
Brian?
No.
Mike?
Mm-mm.
Lorraine? Okay. Can I have a, anybody from the public one more time for, again? All right, can I have a motion to close the public hearing? Motion by John, a second?
A second.
Question by Norm. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. The public hearing is closed. Thank you. Okay. Special permit application, 251347, Nautilus Botanicals, LLC, Hartford Pike, LLC, owner, 738, 750, 780, 790, Hartford Pike. 738, GIS map 115, lot seven, number 750, GIS map 130, lot 30, 780, GIS map 130, lot 31, 790, GIS map 130, lot 34.1, all parcels, as own general commercial, the construction of cannabis cultivation and manufacturing facility. Introduce yourself, please, with your dress and --
Good evening. My name is Nicholas Stigarian. I'm one of the owners of Douglas Construction and one of the owners of 738, the lots that you all just mentioned, 738 Hartford Pike LLC. Tonight, we have an application for special use for cannabis cultivation. I've got Norm Tebow here from Killingly Engineers and Connie DeBover from Nautilus. I'm going to have Norm come up, and we're going to go over this site plan improvement side of things, and then as it relates to any operational questions or any questions related to the operational narrative that was submitted, she'll be able to kind of walk right through that and answer any questions that you have. Okay?
For the record, Norm Tebow, Killingly Engineering Associates, and I'm working with Douglas as the engineering consultant of this project. This is a redevelopment project. Essentially, I think probably most, if not all, of you on the commission are familiar with the property. It's the area in the back of where the, currently the Aldi's is located and the, there's a new package store and so forth, and in the back there, previously, there was the movie theater and so forth. So the project really just proposes to put up a series of hoop houses on the site, and it'll be used for the cultivation purpose of this, this project. And we had, you know, pretty much a pretty minimal site plan on this. We, you know, did the review on behalf of Douglas, has been run by Dave Capasione, and he had a couple of comments that we received. I have a letter that was dated April 16th, which was last Wednesday, and I actually received them on Thursday. So no additional paving is actually proposed out here. There will be some modifications of perhaps some of the traffic islands that are out there in order to allow some travel through the site. The site will be completely enclosed with fencing, privacy fencing and security fencing. The, no additional stormwater drainage is proposed. There is a stormwater drainage system in the parking area now that consists of a series of catch basins. Dave did recommend that at the termination of the, of the construction activities that these basins may need to be cleaned out, and we certainly have no objection to that. His comments included the following. Please provide detailed specifications or a cut sheet for the proposed structures. That was included in the application package. Nothing unusual really about these structures. The anchoring will be per the manufacturer's requirements as far as anchoring down to the, to the existing pavement, whether it be a bollard system or some sort of a footing of so, of some sort that they have to be anchored to, but certainly they will be installed in accordance so that, to prevent any kind of overturning of wind damage. Provide details of the gates. They will just be a large gate that will be accessible, a double gate that trucks can get through. And I should also mention that I did speak with Dave this afternoon, as I didn't have the opportunity to really go, you know, and get everything that he requested, but Dave agrees that his comments are rather minimal in that, and there are certainly things that if this commission chose to go forward to approve this project, these are things I could work out with Dave after the fact. Please demonstrate adequate turning radius for the vehicle access. I do have that on my plan, and actually I have some smaller copies I can distribute to the commission.
Sheet two of these plants has a turning radius for a fire truck, a ladder truck access. I spoke with Randy Burton this afternoon. The truck that would be utilized for this particular business would be anything more than a Subaru truck, something like an articulated 30-foot truck. So the, the turning radius that we're showing on sheet two that could be used to access the site would be similar to a ladder truck. Randy said that they need a 50-foot turning radius, and that truck that we're showing meets that, that turning radius, and it easily goes into the site and can get into there if needed, if need be. Comment number four does kind of go with comment number three regarding the turning radius for vehicle access requirement. The detail sheet calls for breakaway posts, silt sock and silt fence and sedimentation control for the catch basins. The detail on the, these details are on the sheets, and they will be used around the perimeter of the catch basins during the construction to prevent any kind of sedimentation. With regard to the breakaway posts, that will be used for the handicapped parking sign, which would be located in front of the, the commercial building. Number six, the existing catch basins may need to be cleaned. As I said previously, we do agree to that. And please provide details for the landscape screening called out on sheet two. So note number, I think, let me take a second there. Note number five on, in the second column, it does say that, provide landscape screening buffer in the areas shown on the plan. Screening shall consist of evergreen plantings, four feet tall when planted. So up along the islands, and we have these two areas designated, and they're called out on the, on the plan for landscape screening, and that, that four-foot evergreen buffer will be installed in those two areas. One sort of along the eastern central portion of the site, and there's another small area a little further to the south where that landscaping will be installed. Other than that, we're, like I said, there's really not a whole lot of site work out here. They're going to be restriping some of the parking areas. There'd be a loading area that's located toward the end of the existing building that they would, any deliveries or trucks that would access the site to, to take product away from the site could back up to that point as well. There is a secondary access gate on the northeastern portion of the site. That could be used and for an emergency access or egress if needed, but the main gate that's located in the southeastern portion of the site would be the main access and egress to the site.
But the main gate that's located in the southeastern portion of the site would be the main access and egress to the site. We do have, as Nick said, the representative here to discuss operationally what this business is all about, which I think the commission would be interested in that. So, I'm going to yield my seat for a few minutes unless you have some questions before she comes up.
Just a couple of quick points of interest. There are no new proposed utility connections. Everything, any utilities that are being extended are secondary utilities coming from the building that are just for operational purposes. There is no new sanitary hookup. The building that is existing already is serviced by sanitary from Killingly. The use...the new proposed use has a sanitary requirement that is far less than the uses that have been installed in this building in the past. So, there would be no new or, you know, additional capacity burdening the current Killingly system. Additionally, as Norm mentioned, we have very limited excavation on site. We are not proposing any new impervious areas. In fact, we would probably be increasing some of the impervious...or I'm sorry, pervious areas. I had that backwards. And then additionally, we did put on there...we did identify the wetland buffer just to demonstrate that we have no new improvements that are encroaching into the wetland buffer that would require the involvement of the wetlands commission.
Are you leaving the two hydrants?
We are leaving all existing utilities in place.
Might have to clean them up a little bit.
Happily paint those and re-flag them, not a problem. Additionally, one, I guess, one other option. It is identified on there, but there is...there are light poles that are currently in place in the parking lot. And those will be refurbished and we'll have new dark sky lighting heads mounted for that as well. And any wall packs that are fixed to the hoop houses or any of the buildings, that'll all be dark sky.
Mr. Chairman? Just a couple of comments for us. So, very hard to follow the site plans. I don't know what's staying and what's going.
Okay.
You're throwing hoop houses over islands. You said you mentioned the islands that are coming out, but it's over staying.
Those islands would be, and it's probably...it's probably more of a drafting issue where the...those islands that were going to be taken out did not get turned off on the layers, the layering.
And obviously, it's such a small...you zoom so far out with this lot too versus zooming into what's happening. So, it's very tough to follow your landscaping, your fencing, existing utilities. I don't see hydrants. You mentioned two hydrants. I mean, I don't see that on the site plan. I'm a little confused of what's phase one, what's phase two, what's staying, what's going. So, just in general, it's just from a general overall comment, it's very tough to follow what you're asking for on this site plan. As far as the turning radius of the truck coming in, I see him going through the gate, but that's it. I don't see him traversing the rest of the lot. Because again, I, you know, to me, he's running into islands. So, I recommend you just go back and look and really have this display of what you're asking for. So, I'm not sure what you're asking for right now.
I think one of the problems with this is that we're not asking for much. The reason we have...and I understand your comment. The reason we have the site plan is because we're here for a special use hearing.
Yep.
So, the majority of the site as it remains today is staying as it is. The hoop houses, as I think Norm mentioned, is more or less a drafting issue. But we're not removing really anything from the site as it exists today other than for the installation of really the hoop houses and the extension of the utilities that are...
And fencing around it and...
Where we're adding fencing.
And a new building, right?
There's no new building.
What's the...
That's a temporary office facility for the use until the interior of the existing building is rehabilitated for their use, permanent use.
Right, right. It's phase one. It's called for temporary...it doesn't say temporary, it just says phase one.
Okay.
So, again, it's a little confusing from my point of view. But there are some site modifications happening. Again, very minimal. And you're dealing with an existing site, so again, but it'd be nice to show what the modifications are if you could. So that the commission at least has an understanding of what's being applied for. So, except still unsure of what's happening in the main building. There's not a lot of detail as far as what's happening in the main building.
We did supply a proposed building layout with the application.
Yeah, I saw the layout, but I was unsure if that was existing or proposed.
Nope, so that's proposed. So, the intent...the overall intent is to have the use approved to better define phase one, to have the use approved and be able to start cultivation once the requirements for the special use by the municipality as well as the state are met, which are what's demonstrated on the plans. Once that's in place, the rehabilitation of the existing building would take place. So, there'd be an interior gut, which would all go through the building department, new partition walls and the... I guess the process, the internal process of the, we'll call it, manufacturing from the cultivation is what would be worked on inside the building. But as of right now, you have a building that has, you know, I think, three or four units partitioned in it, old Berkshire Bank, you know, training facility type things. And we're going to essentially do a gut and just a rebuild on the inside.
Yeah, like, so again, this is...again, it's not labeled existing, proposed, nothing is labeled on it. So, it's very tough to discern, again, what's being requested, so.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, he's done it. He done it?
Yeah, I can nothing ask because I don't know what's going on.
I have a couple of questions. One of them is the odor. And you said you have department, health departments that gave you letters. Did you get one from Killingly?
So, what I'll do is anything related to the operations, we'll have Mr. Bover come up and she can answer those questions for you. If it's easier for...if we can...I guess if we want to stick with this, any questions on the site plan? And then I can swap seats and Connie can come up and answer a question like that for you.
I have one other one, too. I see where you have some open cannabis. What are you doing to prevent fire? Or if you had a fire, how would you put that out?
I don't...any open...there's no open cultivation proposed on this site.
I thought it did say that, no?
Not on this site, no. This is all enclosed within the hoop houses.
Okay. So, again, what do you do for fire if it's inside as well? Have sprinklers systems?
I don't know. I would...we'd have to check with the fire department. I'm not sure that a fire suppression system is required for this application, but we can certainly check on that. And if one would be required, it could be designed and installed.
Are you trying to get a special permit for all of this?
So, we own all of those adjacent lots. And so, because we're here going through this process, we didn't...as one owner of the LLC, we wanted to just have the use span so that we didn't have one lot that had a special use approved and then have the other lots that aren't. So, just from a logistical administrative perspective from our side, we included those lots in the application. Nothing that would happen on those lots. There's nothing demonstrated on the proposed site plan for those lots. And I did submit a secondary plan that specifically identifies that there is nothing happening on those lots as of today.
So, without having any kind of plan showing any activities, I don't see how we can give you a special permit for those other lots.
And that's fine. We're okay with that. This was just...from our perspective, it was just a matter of we own all these lots together. They're only separated lots because we left them that way when we acquired the properties. We don't need that approval to go with this. We're happy to...we can drop that.
Since the town attorney is here, if you could expand it.
Yeah, what I was going to rec... Ken Slate for the record. What I was going to recommend, if you got to the point of deliberations tonight, I'm not sure you will because it seems more information is required. But if you did, I was going to suggest that you modify...that you...your approval will have a modification to eliminate those lots. For the reasons you just specified, you can't approve a use without proposing the use on... You know, actually showing what the development would be on that land. So, I would recommend that you...if you were to approve it, you just approve it for the lot where the proposed changes in use is presented to the commission.
Yeah, I agree with Brian totally. I can't...it's hard to just make out anything what's actually being proposed here. You know, just minimal details. Yeah, I see the basic format of what you're looking for, but traffic patterns, you know, that's special permit. I can't make out...maybe it's my eyes, but I can't make out. So, I'd certainly want...I'd like to see more detail at a higher scale would be great. Any commissioners and other commissioners?
The only other thing you're going to have fire department access to the gates, right?
The...both gates would have any EMS access, both gates, correct.
Anybody else, any questions? I mean, at this point, it's hard...it's really like Brian said, it's hard to discern what is going on here.
The other ones I got is on operation. The other ones I got is on operation, so I don't know if you want to...
Well, we'll try to do what he was looking for. John, have you got any questions more for site than anything at this point?
No, I'm just a little bit confused about what's going to take place there. I mean, I understand you're going to be growing this stuff, but you're also going to be processing it to a degree, right? Because you're not going to have any discharge water primarily.
Correct.
So, you're just going to be harvesting this stuff and...or are you going to process it too there?
So, I think this would be a good time to have Connie come up and she can kind of go over any of those types of operational details for you, all right?
Just one more comment for, I guess, for Norm, for you, Mr. Tebow. So, section 567 does call for a radius plan.
Yep.
Obviously, I don't believe there's anything in within that radius, but I'll at least make the comment on the site plan. I didn't see it.
No, that's a good point. We did that check. We did go through that. I think we did that on the staff level.
Yeah, you should at least reference it because I think it's required as a site plan or a comment. So, I would at least go through that section, make sure everything's addressed. That needs to be addressed, please.
Anybody else for this second part, please?
Norm?
John, at this point? Okay, go ahead and swap over.
Hi, thank you for having me here. Connie DeBover from Nautilus Botanicals. Oh, sure, it's D E capital B O E V E R. Looks like Deboever. Would it be easier to have me walk through some of the narrative quickly at a high level? Or should we just...should I start to address your questions? What's best?
Sure, if you'd like, if we can relatively quickly, sure. Summarize it.
Yeah, I hope I can summarize it quickly. I mean, as Nick mentioned, we would like to propose a use for cannabis cultivation and manufacturing. It's going to be in a phased approach. I think it sounds like you might have had some questions about that. So, phase one would be the hoop houses, which would be permanent. And then what's temporary is that manufacturing trailer. As Nick pointed out, the only reason we have that temporary trailer is because the building has to be retrofitted and that will not be done, you know, immediately. So, when I think about the phased approach, phase one is the hoop houses over...that's the cultivation part. The temporary trailer will be for the manufacturing and post-harvest processing. The reason that's temporary is because when we go to phase two and we'll retrofit the existing building, that's where we will move the manufacturing and post-harvest processing. And then quickly, from an hours of operation standpoint, we plan to have the cultivation operational seven days a week because we are growing plants from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And then manufacturing will be five days a week from...sorry, cultivation's 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Manufacturing is 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And then I'm happy to answer any questions about operations. That was a very quick level. I know the narrative goes through it in much more detail, but I wanted to try to keep it as high level as possible for you and happy to answer any questions you have.
Anybody?
Yeah. Could you go into detail a little bit about the manufacturing that you're referring to?
Sure. Yep, so, once we harvest the plants, there is going to be...there's a drying and a curing process, right? So, you dry the plants and then you cure them, which is you let the air circulate. And then afterwards, that's when we can process them. And so, processing, if you're familiar with cannabis products, it could include, you know, just trimming the flower, right? So, the buds of the, you know, the plant. You can...you sometimes take the leaves and the stems and make those into pre-rolls, which are, I'll call them, pre-manufactured joints. And then there's also a more manufacturing element, which is when you think about oil-based products. So, if you think about edibles like gummies or vape cartridges, that's where we plan to use, called a live resin process, where you basically take the plant and almost like think of it as putting it into a giant washing machine, right? You don't get into water, you get all the trichomes and I'll call it the essence of the flower out. And then you kind of go through a rinsing process, again, similar to a washing machine. And then you press again...so, you're pressing the flower to get the essential oils. And then you extract it. So, that's where you're basically isolating the THC element and going from a plant to oil. And then you use that oil to make the vape cartridges and also to make the gummies using, you know, gelatin and other sorts of things. So, there's several, I guess, different types of products we would make from a manufacturing standpoint.
They are on the site? You make those products?
Yes. So, again, in phase one, it would be in that temporary trailer. And then, once the building is ready for occupancy, then we would be doing it out of the existing building.
How do you dry that stuff? Like tobacco, you used to be dried and shit? You hang it?
Yeah, pretty much. I'm not familiar with how tobacco is dried, but you basically do...you do hang it up, usually, you know, by the stems. And you control the temperature and the air circulation because you don't want mold to grow. And so, you just need to make sure it's at the right temperature for curing, usually around 67 degrees. And then just make sure there's enough air circulation.
Is that going to be enclosed when it's drying?
Yes, yeah. Because you're trying to control the temperature and the humidity, so, absolutely.
Thanks.
I think there was also a question about odor. You had that question about odor?
Yes.
A letter?
I just wanted to make sure that we had a letter from our own town's public health. I think that would be a good idea.
I...well, I didn't get one from this town just because I was getting it from other towns where there were, you know, cultivation, whether it was indoor or outdoor, just because...
I think it still would be nice to have it from our own town.
Absolutely, yeah, happy to do that.
Any questions, anybody?
Do we need...I make sure it's on. Do we need a letter from our or the town engineer about the sewage? They believe the sewage won't be affected. Well, nothing against you. You can say that. I would say that if I was sitting there. I haven't seen nothing from the town engineer, bless I get also.
To be clear, there is no wastewater from the use process that would be introduced into the current sanitary system. So, nothing to do with growing has anything... So, the only...the only...the comment on sanitary has specifically to do with laboratories.
Right.
So, we have, at a minimum, there's four double...there's four sets of men's and women's bathrooms already in that facility. And that facility has housed, you know, over 100 employees and training sessions and everything else. This is nothing like that. So, when I say that the use is limited, that has nothing to do with the production side. It's just that we have bathrooms. We're going to have less bathrooms and that's all the sanitary hookup is for.
And less people.
I'd just like the town engineer to say...
That's fine.
You know, we got the problem with our sewage plant now, so just...
When they mentioned open, I think I'm using the wrong word. You have temporary hoopla tents?
They're not temporary. Have you...do you know what a hoop house looks like?
I thought I read that you had temporary tents that later on would be put into buildings.
No.
It was called a hoopla tent.
So, the hoop houses are permanent.
And what is that?
So, if you've seen kind of a greenhouse, right, with a frame? And then there's usually like a membrane, so I won't call it plastic. It's higher grade than plastic. But that's, you know, think of it, it literally looks like a hoop house. So, it's kind of almost like a semi-circular structure and...
I think that was my concern about fire more than anything because it is...it's different than a wooden building.
I mean, I can understand that, but I just... I mean, I can understand that, but I just, I, I don't know how you would get anything that's flammable out there.
So this is...
I just say some, you, you do have copies of what it looks like in here?
Yeah, I did, I did, but it's...
I think there's like an, it's like an agricultural grade that they put through that?
It's a greenhouse, yeah.
It's like a, it's like a green, well, sometimes greenhouses are made of glass. You're probably more familiar with that, where, you know, so this is, it's not...
As long as they're safe, I'm just, yeah, I'm just saying, if there's no system in there and it should catch fire, what would happen? You know, I'm thinking of the sprinkler system or, or something.
So this, this would be akin to, and I know the zones are different, but just, you know, common sense speak, right? You have agricultural farmland here in Killingly, and you have owners that put up these greenhouses and they grow things inside of them. It's the exact same thing. So it's, it's that same application, just within the general commercial zone and for cannabis cultivation.
Yeah, I think the difference is we're, we're not growing tomatoes, right? But I think Nick's point is probably well-taken, where, you know, farmers who have a greenhouse, I, I don't believe they have sprinkler systems in there, but it's also because, I, and maybe it's maybe my misunderstanding, but I, I don't see what would spark a fire, right? And you have water sources because you'd have, you know, you'd be watering the plants. So it's not the same as a sprinkler system, but certainly you would have water readily available.
Go ahead.
Would this, would this go year-round?
Uh, no.
Processing?
So the processing could go on year-round because it's done inside the building. But the growing, you know, it's, it's just like the growing season for, maybe it's a little longer for fruits and vegetables. But, you know, because of the climate here, it really would only be from, if we're lucky, April, but probably more May to October, you know, before the first frost sets in. You have some insulation, right, from the hoop houses, but, you know, if we had anything close to this past winter, the plants aren't going to make it. So we're talking about, I'll call it roughly five to six months of growing season?
So if you were to go year-round, you'd need like a glass?
Correct.
Greenhouse?
Yep.
In order to make it economically viable to heat it, or make it possible to heat it?
Correct. Yep.
And the, the other question I had was fertilization. So what happens with, you know, you're fertilizing and watering the plants? What happens with that effluent? That, that, does that just like leach into the drainage system that's already there? Or what happens with that? Does it get absorbed?
Well, it mostly gets absorbed by the plants. So the, I would say 80 to 90% is absorbed by the plants. The rest would run out, you know, trickle down from, you know, the bottom of the, I'll call it the pots. But then, you know, when, I think I mentioned this in the narrative, we're using Connecticut-approved fertilizers and pesticides, so that we're not introducing anything, you know, different than what farmers around here or in the state would be using.
So it would be like a commercial, like a triple-ten fertilizer or something like that, or something different?
It's nothing, it's nothing different. I mean, we're growing different types of plants, but, you know, they still need the same type of, like, you know, nitrogen-rich, you know, soil and, and fertilizers.
Just, well, because this is farm country, we've had some instances where, you know, the nitrates from the fertilizers have leached into the aquifer and created some well problems. I mean, I don't think it's a, you know, widespread problem, but it does happen. And just would like some insurance that we won't create a hot zone there with that type of thing going on.
Well, I think the difference is, you know, versus, I'll call it the more typical fruits and vegetables. I mean, the cannabis plants do require quite a bit of water and they, they'd really soak it up. So I think the runoff for these plants would be significantly less than what you would have with, I would call it, more typical farming.
Okay, and you said like one plant would use about a gallon of water a day?
Mm-hmm.
Did I read that right?
Correct.
And it absorbs almost all of that the way it's set up?
It does. You'd be amazed how these plants are almost like sponges. They, they drink up a lot of the water.
It's, it's not like a hydroponic type system, right?
It's not, but you could grow them hydroponically. I think that test, you know, is a testament to how water-hungry, for lack of a better term, that they are. So I have seen hydroponic systems. That's not the system we plan to use, but that certainly is a growing method that I've seen other cultivation, other cultivators use.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've got a question for town engineer or staff. You know, we've had cannabis before where they're selling it and processing it, but this is growing it. So can you tell me, you got agriculture versus commercial?
It's basically the form of the license for the state. And that's, and that's, it's instead of a storefront, they're doing a manufacturing and...
Right.
cultivation and manufacturing.
So, but if you're growing it, so is agriculture? Just explain it to me because I'm big guy.
No, it is agriculture. It's, that's why I was talking about the greenhouses and the farming when she was talking about that. That's what they're doing. They're growing the plants and then they're taking the raw plants and they're making it into a product.
So agriculture, is there no question zoning-wise from agriculture going into a commercial, general commercial zone?
I don't think with the cannabis. I think because of the way it, the way it is written on the state licenses.
So all the cannabis establishments fall under the same special permit?
Well, that's establishments where you're selling. This is where they're growing.
The way we defined it when, when you guys added it to the regulations, the cannabis establishment includes all the license types. So it includes the cultivation and everything like that, but there are restrictions placed in there in the zoning which would trigger the requirement for hoop houses or greenhouses. You can't just have a field in Killingly. We don't allow for open cultivation. It is an interesting point. I mean, the Upland Review, the 200 that's depicted here, it was kind of a internal staff question. Let's say if it was inside of Upland Review, even though this is a specially permitted use, the hoop house, does that fall under 11Q, right? As an agricultural use. Agricultural use buildings in particular are exempt generally as long as they're not directly impacting the wetlands. Would it trigger a wetlands permanent? Not. That's not the case here based off what's being supplied, so we didn't really have to cross that bridge. The comment on aquifer, I will say this is just outside of a Level A aquifer. It's not inside of a Level A aquifer. So you're either in it or you're not, so we don't have to worry about that for, for this particular property. Some of the budding properties that you guys own do cross a little bit into the aquifer.
And just to go farther, if you were looking at our agricultural use table, which I opened up my book too, it says growing, selling, processing, and field and orchid crops, general commercial allowed. So, but they're just doing it in the hoop house.
Right, I just want to clarify.
So it would be allowed.
Correct, growing, you are processing here than you are selling. Not retail distribution, but...
It's wholesale selling.
Wholesale, yeah.
Correct.
So you are distributing it out to other vendors, I think, or other sellers, is what you said in your statement there?
We'd be selling it to dispensaries.
To dispensaries.
On a wholesale basis.
Whatever they're called, but other shops.
Yes, retail shops.
Retail shops, so that...
Correct, but we are not, right, so if a consumer walked in, which they can't, they, we're not selling to consumers. We're only selling like a business-to-business transaction.
I think if I, if I can, Connie, one thing that, so when we were, when I was all in front of you a couple of years ago, this use was being contemplated and was approved. And one of the big questions that came up with Planning and Zoning Commission at that time had a lot to do with odor mitigation. And assuming everybody's gone through and read the narrative, I found, like, I'm not an operator here, I'm just a landowner, but I found it very interesting the way that the odor mitigation worked and the vaporization. I think that's worth talking about, just because a couple of years ago, that was, that was a concern of this commission. I would, I would, I would maybe address that.
Yeah, and I think it's different too, because most of the, the odor mitigation is, is more, like, if you do an indoor grow, which is, an indoor is an inside of building. In our case, right, like, a lot of the smell, and that's why I went to some of the health departments where they have large outdoor grows, whether it's hemp or cannabis, they're both very similar, because a lot of that does go into the air. But if you're thinking about, you know, sometimes like post-processing, there is some odor and that's why, you know, we did put in the narrative about odor mitigation, because you can put things like, you know, carbon scrubbers and, and carbon filters to filter it out, so when it does, you know, go out through, you know, the vents, then that also, you know, doesn't create any smell issues. And I think it's worth distinguishing, I know, I mean, I think sometimes people mistakenly think of the, the odor of when someone's smoking it, right? And that, that is a fairly strong odor, but that's not something you would smell on the premises because of, you know, the filtration, the air circulation, and other things, other measures we'd have inside the building. And then, you know, the plants growing themselves, right, like, they're, I, I've been at a hemp farm and I've been, you know, in cannabis outdoor grows, like, you literally have to be standing in the plants to smell anything. And as hopefully you read in the narrative, you can't just walk in and take a tour, right? And it's a very highly controlled, access-controlled facility, so we would have to vet you and, and let the regulators know that you're coming. But that's really, that's really why I wanted to emphasize that I think there is a distinction between what people associate and think versus reality. And I, that's why when you look at the, the reality piece and looking at the other towns and their experience, there's been no odor issues, whether it's indoor or an outdoor grow.
Go ahead.
How many security personnel will be during the operation will be on-site?
There'll be at least one, and then we have it remotely monitored by the security company.
Is that during off, off-operation, no, is?
Correct.
Where are they located?
They have a central facility in Texas, but they tie into local, you know, police and fire departments, so...
Well, you would go to dispatch. You don't tie into the local fire department.
Well, that's what I meant. They, they dispatch and let the local, I mean, obviously, they wouldn't be able to do much from, from Texas, but...
And the other thing is, you, you state down here on your policies and procedure, you, you know, restricted the area except for the state, you know, the regulatory, DCP, and law enforcement. You're going to add the fire slash EMS also.
Sure. Okay.
Nope. How many employees would be there on a typical day?
On a typical day, I'd say anywhere from five to 10, especially at the beginning. And then, once we, the building becomes, I guess, is renovated, you're probably looking at anywhere from 10 to 15 a day. And, and there's two shifts, so in terms of how many are on-site at any particular time, you're probably still in that five to 10 range.
And what hours of operation would be expected?
So eight to five for the cultivation and nine to five for manufacturing. And cultivation would be seven days a week, and then manufacturing would be five days a week, Monday through Friday.
So even though there's two shifts, that's still that time period, so they're going to work like four or five-hour shifts?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I just need detailed plans. I, I, you know, dumpster locations, I just can't see everything that's necessary dissected to understand it, really. Fencing, I mean, lighting, shipping, how things get, come and go. We don't, it's harder to see what's happening here.
Ms. Chair? So I got a few for you on the ops plan as well. So, so you talked about phase one, phase two. You had made, made a comment that architectural plans will be filed along the building permit for phase two. So again, but then you're saying these are your architectural plans, so if you can just clean that up and clarify it for us, right? What you're asking for, the timing of phase one and phase two, again, what's staying, what's going between those two, because again, a little unclear. It would be good outside, if you can get a letter from the local board of health, but you did say you had other letters from other departments of health. It'd be good to see those, put those in the application, if you could, to let us know. So underwater usage and wastewater management, so again, you say there's no additional volume, but you said at least a minimum of 80% of the remaining volume. Wastewater will be reclaimed through collection, filtration, reuse, but 20% obviously is going to be runoff or collected into a wastewater system. So if you can clarify that, let us know. And then what is that volume? Just to make sure that there is no exceedance of the local sewer authority. So it might be something that you might want to put the volume in there, just clarify it.
To, to, just to clarify, we're, you're talking about on the grow side?
I don't know. It just says, just says 80% of the wastewater will be collected and filtration reused.
That's the...
I don't know what the other 20% is.
That's, that's on, that's on the grow side. So there, there would be no additional sanitary wastewater for this use into the, into the Killingly system, the public system? The wastewater for the grow would just be, would just be leached?
Not, it's not clear in here.
Sure, no, no, understood. No, I just want to make sure before, before we clarify, just want to make sure we're on the same page.
So what's that other 20% that you're referring to? Again, maybe it is runoff?
Yeah.
It's going to be collecting a drain and discharge to wherever, going to Norm's point, again, where is that, right? There's no floor drains, there's no detail on what that looks like. Where is that wastewater going to go? To let us know. In your water bath you talked about, right?
Could I just stop you for one second?
Yep.
So the wastewater is only on the grow, so it's not, you know, when you think about the existing, in the building, right? The existing plumbing or wastewater, that's not happening. So the, the runoff is only in the outdoor, under the hoop houses for the...
Understood, but where is that 20% of runoff going?
Okay.
To Norm's point.
So we'll clarify.
But again, in, in here, it's not clear what that 20% is, my point.
Okay.
Right, you're saying that now, my, so my follow-up question would be, where's that, what is that 20% clarified? It's hoop houses. Where is it going? Inside the building, under the process, again, just want to make sure, you should probably make a statement, there is no additional wastewater being generated, right? You're talking about what you described as the washing machine, right? The, the process, the equipment, would be good to have greater details. The one other applicant we did see provided us details on the equipment, walked us through all the equipment, how it worked, because we had the same questions, right? How much wastewater is generated? How much by-product's being generated? Where is that being stored, right? Were there any odor issues associated? So it'd be good to walk us through that process, wherein the building is that process going to happen? Both phase one, phase two, those types of things. When you're talking about rendering cannabis unusable, talking about the post-consumer waste that's coming in, you're talking about composting it. So you, you mentioned two options, such as, you know, food waste coming in, yard waste coming in. Is that how you're going to do it? Where is that material going to be stored, right? That in and of itself has odor issues? If you're bringing in food waste and other compostable waste, is it being composted on-site? How's it being managed, right? If you're not doing that and you're shredding and storing it, where is that happening on-site? So it's a lot of open questions when you go through this plan, just to make sure we fully understand what's happening from a process standpoint. And there's not a great deal of detail. It's very open-ended and vague, and then the site plan just doesn't show anything as far as the, the way you're describing it and, and the verbiage part. So I just ask you to look at that and try to link the two up for us and just walk us through the process so we fully understand what's happening in this special permit. Because it's not just a site plan approval, it's not just a use approval, it's a special permit. You need to tell us exactly what's happening on this facility, so...
Okay.
John?
Now, if I understand what you said correctly, there's a growing season, so you're not going to be using heat to grow during the winter time? Lights, stuff like that? Is that correct?
Yep, so we're using the sunlight to grow.
Pardon?
Using the sunlight to grow?
No, uh...
No supplemental?
No supplemental, heating lights or...
Correct.
Stuff like that, yeah.
Yep.
Oh, sorry, last comment, I'm flipping pages. Security system, would be you to describe your security process? Because one comment caught my attention about generators. Says you're not going to purchase a generator or rent the generator until the power's out for more than 24 hours, but your security system's designed to operate for 24 hours. So that means there's a gap in security, right, the way it's written. So you're not going to get a generator till after 24 hours, but your security system's only designed to go for 24 hours.
Right, I'll figure that out.
There's a gap.
24 hours.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, but again... Yeah, so, but again, going back to security, it would be good to understand your whole security system, callouts, who's it going to, the response time, et cetera, just to understand, where is material being stored in the building, how's that security work? Because I assume the hoop houses are open, I mean, they're open, but inside fenced areas, right? I assume they have some security, but what's on the camera, what's not on the camera, without giving away anything that's obviously, you know, critical to your nature, we understand you can't do that in the public forum here.
Can I say one more thing about, I'm back to the tents again, we're comparing it with farmers, and yes, they're planting either vegetables, flowers, whatever, and if they catch on fire, we have bad air because of the smoke and, and everything else. You're planting plants that if they catch on fire, the air is gonna be much different. That's my concern, that you, you might need a little more system to make sure that if they caught on fire, that wouldn't happen.
I think if I understand you correctly, you're concerned about, what's the difference between?
Concern is that if you have a fire and you have all those plants, the air is going up, it's gonna be in the air.
How is that different than if, like, a flower is caught on fire?
A little different than if we were just having plant, um, plants, regular plants. That would be bad enough, because the smoke would be bad, and, and the, you know, it would affect the air, but I think, because this can affect the air a little differently, you might wanna consider some kind of a system in case that happened. That's just a thought.
I think, I think the other thing just to keep in mind is, usually when you see some sort of a, of a fire event like that, right, you, you, you don't see it with, you see it with dry plants, right? Like, have you ever tried to light your lawn on fire? You know, you, you can't, because it's, it's wet, it's saturated. I think in this situation, if you had, if you had a pile of dry old grass that had been, you know, cut and put over there, and it got hot, that's, that's kinda what happens here. But I think this, this application is, you know, a wetted, fertilized, growing plant that wouldn't necessarily be as flammable, I think, as, as, I understand the concern, but I'm not sure that, that you would, you would end up with a fire like that in this type of an application.
No, I'm just thinking, I'm thinking ahead of the time in case that should happen.
Correct, no, I understand.
Because it's a different plant, you and I both agree, and it would be in the air, that's my concern.
So I can't, I personally can't speak to what happens if a, an unharvested, undried, you know, marijuana plant catches on fire, and what happens, like, if you're standing next to it and breathe it in, is there a problem?
No, I'm just saying.
I don't, I don't know the answer to that. Connie might, I don't know what the process is.
At least if you have some kind of a system to put the fire out, I would feel most.
Sure, of course.
I guess that's what I would say.
So what I, what I can say is that, on the drawing, we are bringing over water, and there will be water plumbed up into every hoop house for irrigation purposes, and we do have spigots that'll be available, so in the event that there was a fire, there would be water readily available throughout the entire hoop house. And I think we could also check with the town engineer, as well as the building official, to see if there's a fire suppression system required for this type of application, and we can get back to you on that.
Yeah.
Dave has been great to work with, we've had a number of questions for him as we were going through this, especially as it related to wastewater, so we can, we can certainly, you know, pick his brain and see what he says, yeah.
Anybody else? Yeah, but you, the one thing I'd like is, this, we talked about storage of materials there, you know, anything in volumes, you know, any kind of hazardous materials, or just larger volumes of materials that might be stored, especially under the hoop houses or outside, just, if you gotta identify that on your plans or in the notes or somewhere. Anybody else? Go ahead, Norm.
Just out of curiosity, what happened with the last application? I'm pretty new to this board. You said you had applied for this previously?
No, no, I was, I was just referencing, we, I'd been in front of the commission a couple of years ago regarding some zone changes and some different things, that's all.
Oh, okay.
That's all, that's a dead issue.
Okay.
I was just considering, when I, when I was in front of the commission, this use was being contemplated at that time, and I remembered some of the conversation that had come up, and some of the concerns, one of which was odor. And when I was educating myself on this process, because, again, I'm not the operator, I'm just a landowner, I thought that the vaporization systems and everything was kind of a really unique, and, and, to me at least, learning it was an interesting piece of engineering, so that's the only reason I brought it up.
Thank you. So every greenhouse is gonna have some kind of air filtration to keep the, keep the smell from getting out, or the smell is contained within the hoop house itself naturally?
The smell's contained within the hoop house, and then, when you're on the manufacturing building, whether it's the temporary or the, I'll call it the permanent, that's where, you know, what Nick was referring to, or, or what I mentioned previously, right, with the, the carbon filtration, the scrubbers, and just the ventilation, so that's where you contain the smell within the building.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I think, everybody, you got any more questions, make sure, because I think the conclusion, you'd be coming back with more detailed plans. Oh, Amber, you had the question?
No, I was just gonna, I'm just, was trying to put together through my head, it seems like they take a lot of, the plants themselves take a lot of water, there is some minimum wastewater going away, so you're saying the water's already soaked and wet, so it'd be hard for them to, are you gonna say, lack of a better word, combust? I guess that's the word you would use? Is that what you, is that what you were?
I think what I'm trying to say is.
Basically trying to say, it's a healthy plant, it's not?
I know when I was a kid, right, and I'm, I'm hoping a lot of the other people around here, you know, we tried to set fire to a lot of stuff as kids, right? And I, and you can't, you can't, you know, you take, you, you take a lighter to, to gra, wet grass, you know, that's growing on the ground, and it just doesn't do anything, and if you were to light, light a dry leaf on fire, you know, it will light on fire, so I was just trying to make the, the parallel, that you have plants that are being grown, not dried in these greenhouses, and while they're growing, they're absorbing water, so you're, you're dealing with a, for lack of better terminology, a hydrated wet plant, wet leaf, you know, that's all I was trying to get at.
And I think you made a good point, too, right? I mean, we have water sources on-site, you know, at each of the hoop houses, so certainly could use that for, for any fires.
Does the existing building have fire suppression?
I'd have to check, I'd have to check, honestly, I do not know.
Because that's where all your dry materials are gonna be.
I'd have to check.
Inside the building, eventually.
I think that it does, I'm pretty certain that it does.
And if it needs to be updated, the fire marshal will let them know?
Yeah, lots, that's why I brought it up, though, because if there's a concern, that's where it's gonna be, inside the building.
So if you look at, section 740, under special permits, it gives you some of the things that we should be looking for, and so when I talk about access and parking and what have you, it's identified here.
Mm-hmm.
So if you could just, you know, look at that as you're redoing your plans and information, so that you can have access to it. Okay? So anything else you want? John?
No, I'm good.
Brian?
No.
I'll say the names for the record. Norm?
No, I'm all set.
Lorraine?
Cool.
Okay, so I think we're just gonna ask you to come back next month.
Don't we need a motion for a continuance?
We need a motion to continue it, so you go.
Motion to continue the public hearing.
Have a second, please.
Second.
And the next one will be in May. May 19, Monday, May 19.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Propose abstentions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good point. We got another meeting, so, sorry. I apologize, I don't know what else to say at this point.
It's too late for public comment now, Ken? I forgot to comment, I'm being noticed.
Well, it's the, it's the public hearing, you continued it, it's, it's up to you, Mr. Chairman, if somebody from the public couldn't be here the next time they wanted it.
Right, I was planning on next Monday anyway.
Yeah.
But I. Oh, well, tell us if you'd like now, go for it, I apologize, they left, but we.
Do you want me to open the photos?
This, right here is fine.
All right.
Might we grab the applicants?
Yeah.
Well, I should try.
Jonathan, can you go ask the applicants to come back for a second?
Oh, we don't upstairs?
Did I go public comment?
Yeah, I was yelling, I could hear you, though.
I thought you were gonna yell it out shortly.
Sorry.
That's okay. Get back, so.
I'm sorry, it was noted that I didn't allow, allow public comment, I was gonna continue, but if you want to make a comment, so if you're present, best to hear.
Ula Teak Barclay, 26 Stark Lantern Hill Road, Danielson. So I did understand Lorraine's question, trees in a forest fire burn, so if the plastic started burning, then the cannabis would burn. And in regards to the hoop tents, this shows that the hoop tents open on the sides, so my research said that the cannabis has a very bad odor, so if there's no odor mitigation and these are open, there would be odor, and the odor travels far. And even, from what I read, it said even if they have filtration systems, depending on the quality of the filtration systems, there is still a lot of odor that can go and penetrate the area, which would decrease the quality of life for anybody who was in the wind or that area. And in regards to the, to the water, where's the water coming from? Because a, a gallon per plant, I don't know how many plants there would be, but 20% of that going into the sewer system, that does go into the wastewater plant, so it's not, that doesn't go somewhere, it, it does affect the wastewater. And another thing about the security, I'm guessing this would bring a lot of crime because the tents are outside, and with no security and just a security system, somebody could very easily get in there and vandalize it. So those are my thoughts. And what is the state's stat, I know there's, you can have two stores, what about grow facilities for killingly?
That, that got removed, so the, the state legislature did have a, similar to like, population-based for so many people per grow facility or retail facility, I believe that all got.
That was all taken away?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I, I think that's.
All right, those were my, my comments, thank you.
Just a question, sorry?
Comes out of Mike, please.
Was this, was this continued? Is the public hearing still open?
Yes.
It is, so.
We respond?
Would you like to, would you like a response from us?
Well, you tell me.
Just gonna say, it, it was continued to next month, so the public hearing still would've been open, so normally it would've gone on other business, but if a member of the public came, and in this case, the, the council liaison wasn't sure she was going to be able to be here next time to make a comment, then the chair accommodated her to allow to do, her present, you know, make her remarks, you could address them next, next time, you don't need to address them, them tonight, but we wanted, the chair and the commission wanted to make sure you heard them, so you'd have an opportunity to respond next time.
Understood, understood, thank you, Mr. Solicitor.
Thank you for coming back.
Thank you.
Now, for Ken, do we need you anymore?
I think you're gonna throw me out now, that's what I was, I was gonna confirm with Amber, but I think.
No sense, no sense, maybe you stay.
I think you're all set, because everything else is just.
Yeah, especially because they, they agreed on the record that, that taking the other sites that are not actually part of the development plan out of the approval, they, they agreed on the record that you'd do that, that was one important thing I was gonna recognize, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Good to be here.
That's why we asked him here.
Have a good night, folks.
Good night. Not done yet. Unfinished business, special permit number 25-1346, 543 War Regan Road, JSMAP 252, Lot 20, general commercial, construct two freestanding self-storage unit buildings with a lot line adjustment, zone, general commercial. Make a motion, please.
I'll make a motion, approve special permit application 25-1346, with the following conditions, that site plan be modified to show the information shared in the public hearing about the 15-inch connected DOT line as plugged, it's labeled 18-inch, I believe, it should have been labeled 15-inch and as plugged, and then showing the existing 30-inch culvert along the front, front edge of that lot, so that, that, those minor amendments, and also to add a detail just on the sediment level in the pond from a cleaning perspective.
Okay, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Michael. Any further discussion?
Yes, so the second, second condition is to show the existing 30-inch drainage culvert that DOT has installed along the front. Then the third condition is to add a detail to the site plan to show a level mechanism for the 6-inch sediment cleanout.
No, just to identify the 30-inch, or is that what you said? Let's try to be clear.
Well, to show, so the applicant stated there's a 30-inch drainage along the front, it's just not shown on the plans, so add it to the plans.
It was shown on the map, but not the plan.
Okay, gotcha. Just making it clear for her. Okay, roll call, please. Any, we need more comments before I have a bunch. John, you're good, okay. Roll call, please.
Brian Card?
Yes.
Norm Farren?
Yes.
Michael Huco?
Yes.
John Seratopoulos?
Yes.
And Keith Thurlow?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Special permit application 25-1347, Nautilus Botanicals is continued, and what was the date again?
Monday, May 19th, 2025.
Where can I be? Yeah, exactly. Okay, new business, special permit application 25-1348, BB Car Wash, DSMAP 262, Lot 20, 2.1 acres, general commercial, to hand wash, to hand wash car wash, to occupy the two bottom bays of the building, receive and schedule a public hearing. Is everything ready, already submitted?
We have an application, they're gonna be sending us some photos of the building itself, so we can see where the actual doors are on the building, so, but other than that, it's.
And that's a special permit, so they're gonna have it?
They have to have a public hearing, the next available date for public.
Drawings, something?
Yep. And we already, it's an existing building, so there's already been things there.
Yeah.
We're asking for the photos only because we wanna make sure there hasn't been any changes to the architectural that we have on, on hand, on, you know.
So they're bringing existing mapping that we've already had on hand for, for their application? Okay.
But with, the photo will let us know if there's been any changes.
Somebody make a motion to?
Motion received, scheduled for a public hearing on Monday, May 19th, 2025, number 25-1348.
You have a second?
Second.
John Seratopoulos, second, Brian makes the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Propose abstentions. Site plan application 25-1349, PW Campbell Centerville Bank, owner 125 War Regan Road, DSMAP 220, Lot 37, 1.24 acres, general commercial, construction of a front vestibule area and drive-through ATM reduction of the imperious surfaces with the replacement of green lawn. Receive and, if agreeable to the commission, refer to staff to do the review.
Thanks.
Basically, a site plan review.
Okay, this is a site plan review, this is the Centerville Bank, as I stated, they wanna put on a new foyer, and they're gonna put through some dry through. What I'm passing to you now is their architectural drawings of how they expect, how it looks now, and how they expect it to look once it's done. The first two, it shows you the conditions, an overhead view of the conditions as they are now, you see most of it, the area is asphalt, and it's parking lot. In the second one, down below, you see a bright green, and the bright greens where they're reclaiming landscaping. The two drive-throughs that they're putting through on the new one are off to the, as you're looking at the building, it's off to the right of the building, the two lane
The two drive-throughs that they're putting through on the new one are off to the, as you're looking at the building, it's off to the right of the building, the two lane drive-throughs. But there has been some reconfiguration for parking and reclaiming grass area. And the vestibule that they're putting on is in the front of the building. And you can see it from the, again, you can see it through their architectural drawings. So we're, at this point, staff is asking that it just be remanded back to staff for review, for review and approval.
Anybody have an objection to staff doing it? I think it's important enough that we should have to get involved? Norm? Lorraine? Mike?
No.
John?
No.
Brian? Do we need a motion to do that? Let's make a motion, please, sir. Sir, can I make a motion to give it to staff, please?
I'll make the motion to give it to staff.
John Seren Topolos makes a motion to give it to staff, can I have a second?
Second.
Norm, I mean, Michael?
Whatever.
He makes a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose or abstentions? Okay. Done. You want this back, seeing we're not working on it?
If you want to bring it back, that's fine. If you don't want the extra paper, I'll take it back.
BTU, just put the guilty trip on you.
It's BTU, guys.
It's BTU, yeah.
If I was running the whistle.
We'll give it up.
Adoption of minutes, workshop meeting, March seventeenth, and regular meeting as one. Have a motion, please? The minutes?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to accept, but I've got a comment about it.
Okay, second, John makes his first motion, second?
I'll second.
Norm, seconds? Well, did you vote at this meeting? Norm?
Yes.
Yeah.
At this meeting?
Oh, at that one?
Yeah.
Mike was present.
He was there, so he can still.
Okay, just being clear. So you can make a second, Norm. Got that, Joanne? And if I didn't do that, then I'll not make a second, you know?
John had some questions?
Yes, John.
There were pages missing.
One of three?
From the.
Two of three and three of three.
Yeah. Okay.
Is that it? Anybody else to comment?
Oh. It's on the, on the regular meeting is, this page is missing, I didn't. When the copies were made, they didn't catch it, okay.
We want to delay that vote until we have?
For the regular meeting, you're going to have to delay it till next month, when you get the full thing.
So the special, the workshop meeting, or?
Say, delay both?
Yeah, we're delaying both.
Okay.
No, that was the minute.
Keith, do you want to, you can remove the motion for both of them and just make a motion to approve the workshop, because you have everything for the workshop there.
John, you want to remove your motion?
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Withdrawing your motion.
He's going to draw it.
And you withdraw your second, somebody?
No, I'm withdrawing the second.
Right?
Yeah, I withdraw the second.
So make a new motion for the workshop.
So made.
I'll second.
Okay, got that, Joanne? Any discussion on it? Roll call, please, not roll call. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions? Okay. Other miscellaneous, nothing, correspondents, you guys got that? Any questions for correspondents?
Nope.
Department reports.
Z B I, Z B A did not meet in April. Inland Wetlands Commission did approve a single-family home as part of a free split for one seventy-nine Hartford Pike. That's where Body Balance is, or what used to be Charlene's studio. They're splitting off a single-family home lot. It's private, septic. The.
Wasn't that already split off when we, when they did that project?
No, they, based off the review, they, from the surveyor and everything like that, it was still qualified.
I mean, I know it qualified, I just, I thought it was done.
No, we had it all as one, but, so the Wetlands Commission, we'll be seeing aquifer applications for renewals in the next couple, coming months. We've already started to have a few applications trickle in. An aquifer is only good for five years, during COVID, a lot of them kind of lapsed. So it's, we've put out a call for it, the state has kind of reached out to all municipalities, asking them to start doing that process. With the upcoming annual town meeting, which is, happens to be the same night as the Wetlands regular meeting, the Wetlands Commission opted to cancel their May meeting, asking its members to attend or view the annual meeting. May fifth.
Economic Development?
Brian, we'll be happy to know there's more places to spend money in Killingley Commons. Bath and Body will be opening in late May. We have a run on hair salons.
I was specifically told to ask.
Shop Shop will be relocating to five 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 Hartford Pike, and they'll have a grand reopening on May fifth. Nizani Hair Salon on ninety-five Main Street will be opening on May seventeenth. And Craft Collective and the Barber's Loft will be on one forty Main Street on the second floor. They're doing the ribbon cutting on June thirteenth. On May third, Killingley will be hosting with the Economic Development Commission, a first-time Lau New Year at the community center. So it's an all-day event, it's a free event. If you want to purchase lunch, tickets are ten dollars and you can get those on the Parks and Rec. And that's part of the National Endowment of the Arts grant that was awarded two years ago. And our next E D C meeting is on May fifth.
Okay, Town Council report.
So the Town Council appointed a new interim town manager, Francis W. Conroy. Buddy, he's currently shadowing Mary, her last day is May fifth. So Buddy will be, he currently works with the armed security officers. So he will be keeping that position in addition to filling, filling in as the interim town manager. We did, there is the meeting on May fifth at the Killingley High School, public meeting to go over the budgets, the Board of Education and the town budget. You can either, you can make a motion from the floor to increase or decrease the Board of Education budget, or increase or decrease the town budget by line item. The budget will increase the mill rate by one point one four mills. So the Board of Education and the town budgets were not cut. The Board of Education, Killingley is an alliance district, so they are not allowed to cut, to cut the budget from the prior year. That's one of the stipulations as an alliance district. So the Town Council did make, decrease the budget that the Board of Education wanted to increase by one point eight million. And so the total budget for the Board of Ed and town would be seventy-one million, five hundred eight, two thousand and seventy-two dollars. Any questions?
Did we have any applicant, how many applicants were for town manager temporary? Just a curiosity question.
I believe we had, we started out with five or six and several of them withdrew for various, for various reasons.
Curious. Thank you. Motion to adjourn? Oh, you got something?
I'll make a motion.
There you go, have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, none, okay. Thank you all.